All right, welcome to our board meeting here on September 11th at Hawthorne Elementary School. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Lander?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Ms. Kullivitt?
Here.
Mr. Law?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Rutledge?
Here.
Mr. Hamper?
Here. Mr. Rutledge, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right, thank you. Our topic is communication with the whole school. Dr. Schuler, could you introduce Ms. Holly Zimmer, please, the principal of Hawthorne?
I'd be happy to. So I welcome to the podium Mrs. Zimmer, who is a proud principal at Hawthorne. I can say without a doubt, having spent some time here at Hawthorne, had some fun events at the start of the year, ribbon cutting, et cetera, as a principal that brings a lot of joy and passion to her job here at Hawthorne, does a great job for student staff and community. So Holly, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, Senior Leadership Team, and Student Ambassadors. Welcome to Hawthorne Elementary School, the little school with the big heart. When I joined the Hawthorne family in 2019, I learned quickly that our community was far from small. Hawthorne families and staff are unified in one common goal: what's best for our children. Hawthorne staff and families foster meaningful relationships with one another to build the foundation for a successful school year. This means we prioritize relationship building, connection to school, and above all, academic excellence. While Hawthorne is proud to be the smallest of all District 200 schools, we're also proud of the big things that we do inside of our walls for our students. Our community is small, in numbers, but big and growing in diversity, inclusion, and awareness. We are a diverse group in all ways we communicate. We have 22 languages spoken by our families. We have students who communicate best through writing words, singing songs, and using visuals. We embrace the power of everyone's strengths in communication and help them grow in their own ways. Ethan and Alex are brothers who are in one of our SAIL classrooms. SAIL stands for Social Academic Integrated Language. One of our goals in our program is to support our students in the SAIL environment and in the general education environment. Ethan and Alex join their second grade peers for parts of reading and math, as well as specials, lunch, and recess. Both use a combination of orally spoken words, as well as visuals, gestures, and communication devices to help them communicate most effectively with their classmates and teachers. They're here today to share a little bit about their favorite parts of Hawthorne. (applause)
(speaking in English)
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 So we have a short little video that has some music behind it, but we're also going
to have some student speakers come up in a moment. So I'm going to speak a little bit over this. Can everyone hear okay? Okay. Another big part of Hawthorne are all of the clubs and activities and enriching experiences our students have the opportunity to take part in. These are led by staff and families. Ensuring that every student is connected to Hawthorne above and beyond academics is important to social emotional wellness, as well as their academic excellence. It ensures each student is seen, heard, cared about, and engaged each day. So here to share some of their favorite parts about Hawthorne are Grace, Amy, and Cam. (applause)
I'm a third grader here at Hawthorne. I love coming to school and learning new things, even though learning new things can be very hard to do. One of my favorite subjects is science. I like science because we get to do challenging projects in second grade. We have mystery science with Mr. Doug and experiments. One of my favorite ones was when we were learning about different trees and what happened when the seed drops. Conservation Club is a great club run by Hawthorne parents. Volunteer their time during lunch and recess period and after school. This way, everyone can participate in the club. We do everything from making, from painting rocks and planting fruits and vegetables and making signs for our garden. Another fun event that we have at Hawthorne starting last year is a talent show. I made slime with my friends as a part of showing combination with my love for science and being with friends. One of my favorite field trips was when we went to the Field Museum in second grade. I love seeing the Egyptian artifacts and the huge dinosaur zoo. Thanks to the PTA, every grade level gets to take at least one field trip each year. One tradition that I can't wait to be a part of, fifth grade buddies. I can't wait to help the kindergartners learn all about Hawthorne and how Hawthorne, how fun school is. Thank you for joining us tonight. (applause)
My name is Amy and I've been fourth grade at Hawthorne. Tonight, I'll be telling you about our school. I'll be talking about the clubs that we have. The first club I would like to tell you about is the Running Club. Running Club is a club where you can run monster laps around the field every Monday and Wednesday before school. It is run by our teacher, Mr. Q. The next club I'll be talking about is Chess Club. In Chess Club, we learn about chess and we play chess with a partner. Chess Club is every Tuesday for grades 1, 2, 3. It is led by Ms. Trazer, one of our PTA members. The best club is called Wheaton North Buddies. This is a club where the Wheaton North High School students come to our school after school in the library. Wheaton North Buddies help a lot because they help students with homework and other things like reading, writing, and playing games. It is also one of my favorite clubs. The last club I'll be talking about is Growth Mindset Club, led by Ms. West, our second grade teacher. Growth Mindset is a club that runs kindergarten to fifth. This club teaches us about the importance of perseverance in the Hawthorne way. We learn strategies to never give up, keep trying, and the power of yet. Thank you for joining our school this evening. (applause)
Thank you for taking your time out of your day on this lovely evening. My name is Cam and I'm a fifth grader at Hawthorne. I am very thankful that I got the chance to talk about how great Hawthorne Elementary School is. First, I'd like to talk about the fun educational things we get to do in class. One of my favorite subjects is math because we get to play fluency games and share our ideas with our peers while also learning at the same time. One of my favorite projects is one in third grade when we got to make our own discs and fly them. Then we measured how far they went and compared them to each other. Another subject I enjoy is science. This year, we were able to dissect owl pellets to help us understand food webs, food chains, and best of all, we got to keep the bones. Next, I'm going to talk about band and orchestra. I learned how to read music in fourth grade from Mrs. Thackeray, and now I'm in fifth grade, I am able to play in the band with Mr. Gloss. Another reason Hawthorne is great is that our teachers and staff support us so we can achieve our goals. In fourth grade, our teacher has something called Bork Books. This is class money we earn from saving prizes. In fifth grade, I am looking forward to doing the Wax Museum. This is a project where we get to study research and present on a famous person important to us. To end my speech, I'd like to talk about Friday Sports Club. For grades 3 through 5, this is a club run by parent volunteer Mr. Somerville after school where we get to play sports and gym games like Boom City and flag football. Thank you for joining us this evening and welcome to Hawthorne. (applause)
Well, thank you guys. Thank you for being here tonight. You guys, that's the best part of our meeting. It's awesome. So thank you for everything you did tonight. It was awesome. Appreciate your time. Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to public comment. Thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school, district, and community. Is the board's practice not to directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and the information is explored? It is not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to reduce the time for each speaker. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we treat, all treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Kullivitt will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I'll respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin. Thank you for investing time to attend the board meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district. We have one speaker tonight. It's Julie Schubert from Hawthorne School.
District 200, School Board, Leadership Team, and Community. My name is Julie Schubert, and I teach multilingual students here at Hawthorne, and I'm a member of the WWEA. My son started kindergarten at Lowell in 1998. A few years later, my daughter also started kindergarten at Lowell. I went back to school and completed my teaching certificate, and in 2005, I joined the staff at Hawthorne. There are so many things about District 200 that I am thankful for as a parent and an employee. As a parent, I was not worried about whether or not my children would be ready for college. Both of them had great experiences at Wheaton Warrenville South and were successful in college. During my 19 years at Hawthorne, I have had the opportunity to teach first through fifth and as a multilingual teacher. In this role, I work with students who are learning English. I work with some students, some of the same students, as they progress in different grades. It is so rewarding to watch the students learn and grow. For example, I started working with a student in second grade that could not read or write English yet. By fifth grade, she was able to exit the multilingual classes as she transitioned to middle school. This is just one of the many stories I have about working with students. The multilingual teachers sponsor Wheaton North Homework Buddies, which is a club for multilingual students from kindergarten to fifth grade. The Wheaton North students that volunteer to work with Hawthorne students are from the multicultural club, the education classes, key club, and honor society. Previous Hawthorne students have volunteered too. One of the volunteers continued to work with a group of students for two years post-high school while they were taking classes locally. This volunteer was in my third grade class and is currently going to college to become a teacher. I am also passionate about social emotional learning. Our goal is to make sure that students feel safe at school and provide opportunities for them to get involved. We offer a variety of activities for all grades, all students. Last year, the students from every class participated. Some classes had 100% participation. The other purpose is that students have the opportunity to build positive professional relationships with teachers, and teachers get to know the students. These relationships are especially important if a student is struggling. So District 200 School Board, Leadership Team, and Community, thank you for all the opportunities for my children and myself. This truly is the little school with the big heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're onto the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler?
Yes, I've got a couple of things under my report this evening. I'm going to go right to our high school ambassadors to let them first give their reports from our respective high schools. I know we've got a lot going on, so maybe we'll start first with Wheaton North. I don't know who's giving the North report tonight. Is it you? All right. Thanks, Carla.
Okay, so I would like to start by reporting on our National Honor Societies that have taken place in Wheaton North. So now that we've gotten more into the school year, kind of things have taken full swing. So National Honor Society had their first meeting last week where students were reminded to get their 20 hours of service needed by the end of the year. We had a really great turnout in the morning, considering that we all have to be there at 6:50, we had a lot of kids show up. Our Social Studies Honor Society, Ro Kappa, is also starting up with lots of new members this year. Other fall activities that are starting up is the Speech Team, which is starting extra early this year thanks to our earlier start date. So that's getting into full swing. We have lots of new members this year, especially from the freshman class. Everyone is very enthusiastic to join and explore new things in high school. The same thing also applies for our Youth and Government Program, which is also starting up. We, like I said, have a lot of new members as well, especially freshmen, who are just really enthusiastic this year to get started and explore new topics in high school. So that's very exciting.
So Wheaton North began its fall musical Frozen Junior, which performs October 13th and the 10th, and this will be our first play from Wheaton North to include elementary school students, which we are so excited about. And meanwhile, our school's Animal Rights and Adipacy Club, or PAWS as we call it, will have the DuPage County K-9 Unit come in for a demonstration for our members, and they will receive a monetary donation.
Just a few more things that we're excited about at Wheaton North. Our fall sports are all officially underway. We have girls and boys cross-country, girls volleyball, boys soccer. Boys soccer is our senior night tomorrow at 6:30. Football, tennis, swim team, and the golf team have all begun. And then one more thing, we have five new clubs this year. Three of them are started by students, which is really cool. We have a business club, aquarium club, a club that's called Wormerall, Middle Eastern North African Club, and fashion club.
Awesome. Thank you. How about South? Nothing like right in the meeting into your report, right?
Can you hear me? Sorry, we are a little disheveled. Our homecoming events are in full swing. We all just came from our homecoming parade, so forgive us for just being a little late and a little out of sorts here. So, hi there. Thank you for having me. My report consists of some surveys that we did at South and that we're planning to do at South, as well as just some general feelings that the student body is having. So just this week, Principal Campos and the administrative staff released a survey to South where they were tasked to answer basic questions to give a sense of how they felt they belonged at South, as well as identifying a staff member which had made students feel like a sense of belonging. A similar survey was also given to staff members alike. In our meeting this morning with Ms. Campos, she said something that stuck out to me as a key takeaway from both the meeting and of a quality of her leadership which is extremely honorable. She said that, "I know many students would rather be anywhere than here each morning, but my goal is to, no matter what, make 100% of students and staff feel like they belong." She told us how she dedicated a good portion of her time into meeting with individual students and staff members alike to identify the reasoning of feeling othered and how she personally could assist them in getting involved or resolving past issues. Last Wednesday, we had the privilege of meeting with the Wheaton North team and Dr. Schuler in the morning to discuss the needs and opinions from students and staff for the board to hear with regards to upcoming decisions. Among those was the discussion around electives for the middle schools, the calendar for 2026 and 2027, excuse me, the school years, and then the technology policy. And then we also were talking about potentially including eligible seniors to get them involved to become registered to vote for this upcoming election. Since then, we have crafted a survey we plan on releasing sometime before the next board meeting to get a general idea of how students at South feel on these topics with questions such as, "Do you believe that specialized courses and electives in middle school could have helped you discover your interests and potentially a career beyond high school?" and "Would you prefer the Semester 1 final exams to occur before or after winter break?" With a little tweaking, we believe this survey could provide valuable insight that the board could find very useful in determining future action. With all that being said in regard to us being a little disheveled, the general feeling at Wheaton North South is extremely positive. Students are excited and energized about the thought of homecoming, and many are going all out with their outfits during our themed days like we have never seen before. And also, many students are joining new clubs and activities featured in our Activity Fair just a few weeks ago, which are now up and running. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Is that... I don't know. What's wrong? Oh. Okay. Hi, thank you. So it's a pleasure to be back here with you all tonight. And this evening, I wanted to share a bit about South and how we're getting back fully into the school year swing. To begin with that, our fall sports are off to a great start. We've been seeing lots of support for our girls volleyball team, who are selling their Dig Pink shirts for breast cancer awareness, as they do every year, and of course, the football team. To students, Friday Night Lights is something that we really anticipate. We've been seeing great turnouts to the games with our student section being packed to the brim. And Ms. Campos has mentioned to us that our opposing teams even take note of how great our school spirit is, from sitting down to respect our opposing team having injured players or our team having injured players, jumping around chanting and cheering on our team. Tiger spirit is high as we approach our homecoming game facing Geneva this Friday in our best white-out gear. As for our freshmen, they've been adapting well to Tiger Nation. Our overall goal is to be sure that they feel included in everything despite being new to the school. The Tiger mentoring program has met with them several times now. Two weeks ago, we took them down to the gym for the Activity Fair, which was hosted all three lunch periods. In our main gym, booths were set up for almost all of the clubs offered at South, and the freshmen had the opportunity to walk around and get more information about any clubs that they may be interested in being a part of. As for mentors, we have also thoroughly prepared them for Homecoming Week, which you will hear more about from Caitlin, from walking them through the themes to teaching them how to buy their ticket to the dance on Saturday. The mentors ensured all freshmen were aware of the fun festivities of Homecoming Week. Curriculum Night for us took place on August 28th, and there was an amazing number of parents who attended. Before the parents walked their student schedules and met their educators, they were welcomed and guided by members of the South National Honor Society chapter, and there was an optional session per grade level where parents could hear from counselors about specific information pertaining to their students. Over 400 families showed up early to Curriculum Night to listen in, and totaling about 800 families attended Curriculum Night in order to get to know the teachers that their children learn from every day. And thank you, I'm very happy to pass the discussion on to Caitlin and what she has prepared for you guys tonight.
All righty, speaking of disheveled, happy homecoming! Last Friday, we kicked off the beginning of Hoco festivities at South with our official homecoming theme being Tiger Fever, little disco moment. Students gathered in the gym on Friday for a mini pep rally to introduce this year's homecoming core and the week's schedule. Student council members volunteered on Sunday morning to fully duck out the school in disco balls and streamers for the week's jump start. Monday dress-up theme was Night at the Disco with vendor day in the morning, so everyone wore their comfiest pajamas and picked up nothing but cakes, McDonald's, and Jamba Juice sold in the commons by student council members. And then Tuesday was Biker versus Surfer Day. It was similar to Teen Beach movie, so students and staff chose to bust either tropical outfits to rival with leather jackets, with Principal Campos rocking her own cycler getup. Main Event hosted students last night with over 300 students participating in gameplay, gravity ropes, laser tag, and bowling. Staff members were also able to have fun with the students outside of school. Our ambassador group even played a round of bowling with the social studies teacher, so shout out to Chuck Williams. Today, our students wore class t-shirts and colors with the seniors wearing their special senior jeans that they each painted, and we hosted our annual homecoming parade down Weasbrook Road that featured over 30 student organizations. We each walked with a different event prior to this meeting, so we can definitely attest to the great community turnout. Following the parade, South is hosting a movie night on Red Grange Field for students to watch Back to the Future and concessions that we sell. Thursday's dress-up theme is Twin Day, so students get to match with their friends throughout the school day, and Friday's theme is Tiger Spirit to celebrate our school colors. Friday will end with our Homecoming Assembly featuring a mystery guest before students come back to Grange for our white-out football game against Geneva. Our student section, as Lauren said, has been showing up and showing out, so we expect a really great turnout. Homecoming Week concludes with the dance on Saturday night in the orange and black gym with games like Bags and Giant Connect Four set up to give students a little water break from the dance circles and the booming DJ. So overall, Homecoming Week is definitely one of our more involved weeks of the school year, but it attracts all kinds of students. Even those who may not normally attend a football game or go to a student dance, they're able to find an activity that they can participate in. It's a great week for staff and students to feel connected to the school and its community, plus some teachers let us out of some homework, which is always a plus. I have nothing else for you all, but happy homecoming.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Lots going on certainly across both high schools, and I know in addition to just hearing all of the excitement, you certainly brought a smile to Dr. Salagi's face with all the mention of connection and engagement and all of the things certainly that are really important to us, so thank you for highlighting that. Just a couple of other things I'll share with the board tonight under my report. I had an opportunity earlier today to attend a 9/11 ceremony in Memorial Park, really a beautiful ceremony that the city of Wheaton puts on every year. We had some students from Longfellow's Kindness Club that attended, did the Pledge of Allegiance. We had some students from Franklin Middle School. Actually, I was chatting with one of the teachers, and they had students write an essay if they wanted to attend the 9/11 ceremony, just explaining why and the point of connection to them, and then invited the students to a walking field trip to join for that. So really, really nice event. I think you heard mention under the high schools, the back-to-school Curriculum Nights. Had an opportunity to attend a few more Curriculum Nights than I'm sometimes able to this year with some of the referendum material that we were sharing, had a chance to go to all of the middle school Curriculum Nights, a number of the elementary Curriculum Nights. And again, just great to see the level of partnership engagement of our parents, the incredible way that our staff represent the work that they do in such a positive way. So really a positive start. Third thing I wanted to mention to the board, shifting gears a little bit, we did get a check yesterday for the second of the settlements from the vaping litigation that we were involved in. We got the Altria check for a little under $60,000, so Dr. Keefe is certainly happy to see that. We started last night, the first of our town hall meetings related to the referendum. So I mentioned the Curriculum Nights and the work that we've done, so held a meeting last night at Edison. We have three more town hall, open town halls coming up in addition to three joint PTA meetings at our middle schools in addition to all of the Sharper Focus meetings that we're doing. we're doing with our staff at each of our schools. So we've been certainly very active in sharing information and our information messaging and happy to continue doing that. And then finally, just want to mention that Dr. O'Keefe has been busy. We've provided and updated a couple of meetings recently on some intergovernmental projects that we're working on, one to improve Pleasant Hill Park in conjunction with the Carroll Stream Park District. Also are partnering with the Wheaton Park District on a grant that they're putting in to do some redevelopment and improvement behind Monroe School back in Graff Park. Actually, the portion of that property that's actually our property, but they developed with Turf Field, and now are ready to improve that a second time. So there are a couple of IGAs that will need to come to the board at your next meeting that both of those park districts had to complete with us to be able to submit the grant application. They're both submitting to a similar entity, but again, I think good opportunity to improve assets in our community that obviously sit immediately adjacent to our schools and very much are important to us. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. On to the consent agenda. The items on our consent agenda tonight are approval of statements of completion from the Regional Office of Education for Hawthorne Elementary, Johnson Elementary, and Sandberg Elementary Schools, approval of annual vendor contracts generating revenue, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, August 14, 2024, regular meeting, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to April 2023 as allowable by law, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board, are there any items you want removed from the consent agenda tonight? Our hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No additional information, just a quick reminder that, number one, the approval of those statements of completion, that obviously is a step the board has to take, but it is a good reminder that we are so appreciative of your investment in capital infrastructure. Every summer, those are three of the projects represented in what was almost a $10 million investment you made this summer to improve our facilities, so we are appreciative and thank you for that.
Excellent. Board, any questions or comments?
Just one comment. With regard to annual vendor contracts generating revenue, I appreciate the autonomy that our schools have in choosing some of these vendors. I do wonder if there's an opportunity in some areas to leverage scale by looking across facilities in order to get lower costs for the school and for the parents that are in some cases purchasing services, a great example being school pictures or the book fairs. So don't know how much that scale would get us in terms of savings opportunities, but just wanted to suggest that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
Mr. Rutledge?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Ms. Kullivitt?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Next item is the Policy Approval Consent Agenda. We have four revised policies for approval tonight. Policy numbers 4.70, 5.130, 5.200, and 6.140. Board, are there any items that members want removed from the Policy Approval Consent Agenda? Hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No additional information. Both of these policies all went through your policy committee, were posted last month. We haven't received any public feedback or comment on them, so we certainly recommend you approve tonight.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments? All right, board, I needed a motion and a second to approve the Policy Approval Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kullivitt. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Kullivitt?
Yes.
Ms. Blatter?
Yes.
Mr. Jerpy?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have one action item tonight, and that's the approval of the resolution to adopt the fiscal year '25 budget. Dr. Schuler?
As Dr. O'Keefe's making his way up to the podium, I just, a note of appreciation to the board's finance committee, who's been very actively involved throughout the budget process while this action tonight reflects the culmination of the process of posting a budget. This is months in development, actually half of a year in development to get to a final budget this evening, and your finance committee was very actively involved in working on the board's behalf as we worked through the details. So Dr. O'Keefe, go ahead.
Good evening. Dr. Schuler, thank you. Board of Education, thank you for your time and consideration tonight. This is the final aspect or process of your budget for the fiscal year '25. Just a couple of quick notes for you and for the public. In your green packets, you do have a copy of the presentation plus a copy of a board booklet, in essence, a budget booklet, a little different than what you see throughout most of DuPage County. Very few school districts put together a booklet like we do. It's history. I'm just following what's been in place, but I think it's a really good point of reference when you're looking at actuals and then budget versus budget year over year. In addition to that, in the board book, there is the resolution specifically that is required statutorily to be approved tonight for the budget. And then on top of that, there is a copy of the state budget itself, which we'll ask for you to sign. If in fact that's approved tonight, then that gets submitted to both the clerk of DuPage County, the state of Illinois, and the ROE in DuPage County, too. So just a little history and reminders of responsibility. Dr. Schuler started this. It's a long process to put this together, especially with a district our size. We begin with your regular meeting in January where we ask for approval to begin working on the budget. We walk through then. The next biggest thing we touch is the five-year forecast in January to give the board and us from an administrative perspective a sense on where we're headed. Then we spend really a good four to five months just digging into what we know and what we can put into the tentative budget. T tentative budget comes to you specifically in July, that's after a review from the finance committee. Once we post a tentative budget, we have our public hearing 30 days afterwards. Then we get to this point in the calendar year. Tonight's the official approval of the budget, and I'll walk through some changes that have happened since the tentative budget was posted. Another just reminder for the public as a whole, there are seven working funds within our overall budget. Three of those are the largest, and we'll talk about that in a bit, and then four of those make up your operating budget as a whole. So a few new opportunities through Frontline to provide you with some updates and slides. Our major revenues really come from three funds. Almost 88% of our revenues come through the education fund, the operations fund, and the transportation fund. That does not encompass all of your operating funds. Your operating funds would include Fund 70 on top of that, but the revenue that we generate out of that is specifically interest income. But certainly, the education fund is the driver in our district and like most districts in the state in terms of the major revenue source, where the money comes from and goes to. When you break down our operating revenue, so again, that's Funds 10, 20, 40, 70, that's the major operating aspects of our district. About 78% of that specifically comes from property taxes, and then there's a breakdown between the state and the fed. So certainly, like most districts in DuPage County, property taxes are the biggest revenue generator as a whole for school districts. When you look on the expenditure side of things, all of our funds together, you see the aggregate expenses anticipated for this year. Very similar conversation to my slide two slides ago. About 88% of all our expenditures come specifically from three funds. That's Fund 10, education fund, Fund 10, 20, operations fund, and then Fund 40, which is the transportation fund. You see those other funds comprise just about 12% of that total with education on the expenditure side, just like the revenue side being the biggest fund that we have in our budget. When we look at overall salaries, benefits, and all of our other expenditures by object and the operating side, two big things stand out, and this is fairly similar throughout every public school district. Salaries and benefits comprise the vast majority of our overall expenditures. That's 75% of what our anticipated budget looks like for this current fiscal year. So there's some changes from the tentative budget, and there'll be some reasons behind it. So I'm going to go through these quickly and then give you some reasons behind it. So a decrease in the tax levy, anticipated revenues, I'll explain that in just a minute. Decrease in CPPRT, we did get a bit of a bump from the state in our evidence-based funding. We also had a large unanticipated orphanage reimbursement from the state that has not specifically made it into the pocketbooks yet, but it has been issued as a warrant by the state of Illinois. And then we measure out all of our state and federal grants to make sure that what grant has been afforded expenditures align directly with it. So two big things out of this, property taxes. We are on a cash basis when it comes to the budget and when we receive all our revenues and expenditures. We received roughly $4 million more on June 28th than Mr. Thoris and I anticipated when we built the tentative budget. That then has to adjust. That means our fall collection is lighter, and we readjust our spring collection to match prior spring collections. Your collections of taxes in totality for the '23 levy through June 30th was almost 52.8%. We budget at a 50% and then have to work through it on a cash basis side of things. Your AFR, your annual financial reports, budget at a 50/50, but since it's a cash basis, we have to make the adjustments. What that means is you have some folks within our district that pay all of their taxes at once prior to June 30th, regardless of when they were actually due. That therein lies the difference. CPPRT, again, that's a tax from personal property, real estate from companies back in the 70s. That's an estimate that comes from the Illinois Department of Revenue. As good as they are, they're never right. They're never accurate because it is a historical number that's based on estimations. So the estimation for this year that we thought at four and a half million, the Illinois Department of Revenue chopped that by a little bit more than $1 million, and we just follow suit with that. Everything gets true up year after year, but from a cash budget perspective, we're estimating what we believe to come in the door. And then a few other things, like I already mentioned on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, part of this has to be a balance. We're not balancing benefits and positions by chopping positions or cutting positions or doing this, but Jordan and Mr. Thoris did a detailed analysis of where our positions were in June, compared to where they were after our book of business was hired, all of our human capital was brought in, and those adjustments are through retirements, positions that are not filled, positions no longer needed, or just overall estimations that are lower than what we originally thought in the tentative budget. That comprises about $1.3 million between the tentative and the final budget. Another true up that we have to do, and we need the summer months to help us with, is benefits. Anybody at any point, as long as they have a specific qualifier, can change benefits. All of our new hires, which were more than 100 this year, we really don't know what they're going to select when they come in, and in fact, they have 30 days after they're officially hired to make those determinations. So Mr. Thoris and I go back and look at what we believe things were, where we anticipate things going, but part of our challenge is our coverage year begins September 1st, so it doesn't also align with our fiscal year. So we have some knowns for a couple of months, and then there's estimations for the rest of the year, because again, with a life qualifying event, somebody can change their benefits at any given point. We review professional services, so part of the movement between salaries potentially comes to professional services, using outside agencies for positions that were not filled. We look at supplies. There was no change in capital equipment or termination benefits, little minor change in tuition and other objects. So our 600 objects, again, that's all of our costs related to paying for outsourced education for students in private facilities, and then a small increase in our non-capital equipment. And for those of you that have heard this before, sorry for the repeat. What a 700 account is, something more than $500, but less than $5,000, which is your capital expenditure limitation, that's your threshold. If you spend $5,000 or more, it's considered capital equipment. Below 500 is a supply. Between 500 and 5,000 is a 700 account. And again, termination benefits, this is not from terming employees, from employees leaving the district. This is payouts for sick days, vacation days that are legally due to an employee. In O&M, same thing. We had to adjust tax revenues. There was an adjustment in salaries because we are not rehiring as many of our maintenance folks as we originally anticipated. And then we're starting our new maintenance head custodians in the three buildings that were approved by the board back in the spring, later than we anticipated. So that leads to a reduction in the overall anticipated cost of salaries. Decrease in benefits, truing up our purchase services, and increase in supplies, that's the biggest thing on here. That is specific to a huge increase in pass-through costs on electricity. The amount of pass-through costs that are coming towards us on electricity have quadrupled in the last two years, are going up four more times after that before the end of this fiscal year, so we're just trying to do our best to account for that. No change in capital expenditures, and we did have one vacation payout from an employee that left the district. Fund 30, so that's our debt service fund, a little change in tax revenue that happened to be a blip up, but the same premise behind what I've discussed before, no change in interest earnings or general state aid. As a reminder to the board and the public, the reason that we moved general state aid into debt service is to pay for our lease obligations for Jefferson. So that money is brought in through education, transferred to debt service. We're required by law to pay that obligation through debt service, even though we're using operating dollars to pay that specific expense. Transportation fund, same thing. Little decrease in the overall tax revenue, little increase in pupil transportation expense. One note that we shared with the finance committee last week, so the state transportation reimbursement. So what we get reimbursed for from the prior fiscal year isn't due until August 15th. We are required by law, statutory law, to submit it by August 15th. Lisa Maher does a great job and does it on time. We then get an estimation back of what those revenues might look like. Those revenues look larger than what we have in the budget, but what we've not been told is if there's any final reconciliation from the state and further proration based on the overall state budget. And that's the biggest catch that we always have to worry about. I would rather underestimate revenue specifically in transportation than believe the state is going to pay us what technically they're owed, what you are owed by law, and have them prorate that back and have an unbalanced budget in O&M. Few other budget changes, so IMRF, so that's the classified union and specifically retirement fund in the state. Capital projects, slight decrease there, too, flat across the board in terms of interest earnings, including working cash. So what that leads us to is really the important part of it in these last two slides. So you have a board policy that says we must have a balanced operating budget. You do, I'll explain why that's the case in just a minute, but we've looked at the budget in two different aspects. One, in totality, we're estimating almost $243 million in revenue, about $247.5 million in expenditures. This is overall budget, not operating budget, so that if everything happened to the penny, that would be a net change, meaning a deficit of about $4.7 million. But to get to the operating balance side of things, which will be further described at the bottom in the next slide, we've got to back out stuff that doesn't count. So in essence, it's okay to have a deficit in Fund 60, it's not a part of your operating budget. It's okay to have a deficit in Fund 50, that's IMRF, that doesn't count towards the operating budget. We always try to balance that. There's a slight projected deficit this year. And then Fund 30 typically can have a huge surplus or a huge deficit. It all depends on collections and when your debt is paid, and since your last debt payment will be attached, part of it will be attached to this budget year and the upcoming tax levy year. That explains, it's timing, that specifically explains debt service. So for us, reconciling, if we back those out, we're at $2.9 million in terms of a deficit related to the overall operating budget when you're looking at everything on a cash basis, with $9 million being transferred out of O&M and being moved over to capital projects. I'll show you in the next slide. The state doesn't look at it from that perspective, but that's how we look at it from a cash basis. Below is just that same reconciliation, looking at the operating side of things. So where does your board policy come into play? It's here. Specifically, your board policy follows the state budget form in that you must have a positive operating balance, and you do not have to submit a deficit reduction plan. If you see in the state form, you don't. We don't have a deficit reduction plan. Prior to any movement, so transfer of capital out of O&M to the capital fund, we are projecting a $6.1 million operating surplus. We back out the $9 million that we're transferring over to Fund 60 to pay for all of our work this summer and the work that you've authorized for Perkins and Will and through our summer security update. security update. Again, that came from revenue from TIF number three in Wheaton that was collected last fiscal year, but we're expending the majority of that money this fiscal year. That's where we get to the $2.9 million. And when you look at the two major things that the board has authorized, one, the extension of schematic design in advance of the referendum related to our middle school projects, that's about $1.34 million. That's Perkins and Will and consulting, whether reimbursement or direct. Plus then our security expenditures or security upgrades at our elementary schools, at the high schools, so FOB systems, camera systems, all the work that was done this summer, that's about a $1.56 million. You add those two together, they don't add up perfectly to 2.901. They're a little bit above it. I didn't get it exactly to the dollar amount, but that is the specific reason why when we look at this slide, we look at an overall operating deficit, even though it's through two board actions that are using fund balance as a reminder to the board and the public. If there is positive feedback in November, the board has already approved a resolution that would reimburse itself for some of these expenditures, specifically that $1.34 million that's highlighted here. So we have three things we always look at. Are we meeting board policy? We're meeting board policy. Are we abiding by state statute? We're abiding by state statute. And then we following through on what the board has approved or the expectations for the board, in our case in Vision 26, and we're doing that also.
Thank you, Dr. O'Keefe. Board, are there any questions? All right. Thank you. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the final fiscal year 25 budget as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second. Second by Ms. Blatner. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the oral?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have two oral reports tonight. The first oral report is the Vision 2026 Middle School Electives Update. Dr. Schuler?
Yep. So both of your reports this evening, your oral reports come off of your work plan for this year. One of the items that has been in your strategic plan and is specifically called out this year is some work that Mrs. Murphy and her team have been doing, the middle school team specifically around looking at some middle school electives. So clearly there's not an action item tonight. We're just introducing this tonight with some, some questions at the end that we'd like to get feedback on as we move forward through the fall. So, Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to have an opportunity to provide you with an update on the work we've been doing with middle school electives. I have four guiding questions for our presentation this evening. I'm going to start with what are our current middle school electives and why would we be making updates? So just as a reminder to orient you back to the middle school instructional day, there are eight periods, each are 45 minutes in length, and electives make up two of those eight periods for our students. Here, I'm going to walk through just what our current offerings are. It's important to understand the structure of the electives for our students. So students in sixth and in seventh grade have the option to take a, they have to take a one-year-long course and then they take the quarter-long rotations. So all students experience those four classes that sit under the quarter heading and then they get the choice amongst those year-long programs. This is the same in seventh grade, the same setup. I know there was a question from a board member earlier about what does PLTW stand for? That's Project Lead the Way. That is a STEM curriculum. We offer two of Project Lead the Way's courses, one in seventh grade and one in eighth grade. Eighth grade is a little bit of a different structure and students have the choice amongst all of these possibilities here. So as Dr. Schuler mentioned, this is rooted in Vision 2026 and specifically under the strategy that states expand programming to prepare students for a full range of post-secondary opportunities. Specifically in that language, we had put in there a review of middle school electives to align with career pathways. And so often when I'm talking about this work, whether it's with our staff, it's with our administrators, I'm talking about that studies show that attending a post-secondary and earning post-secondary certification really results in earning a life sustaining wage, but there's multiple ways to get, to experience post-secondary education. But with all of those options, we really want to root our experiences here in District 200 along having career awareness and work-based learning opportunities. That's part of our career pathways vision. So those conversations really resulted in us developing this vision statement for electives. And I specifically want to call out a few key features of it that we really went back to when we were talking about what we wanted to offer for our students, really thinking through, how do we have an opportunity for all students to earn a life sustaining wage? We want middle school electives to be an opportunity to have career exploration experiences and opportunities for students to explore interests and develop talents. We want electives to allow students to create an identity for post-secondary education. You know, I do just want to highlight middle schools, that time where suddenly students are taking a different set of classes and that's in the elective space. So this, the electives are certainly exciting courses in a middle school student's life. Because this was all rooted in the idea of career pathways, we started with an alignment of what courses we are currently offering to the ISB seven career clusters. And so those are listed on the left-hand side of this table and on the right-hand side, you can see the crosswalk with what we were currently offering. You can see there is one of the pathways where we are very heavy and then there's spaces where we were lighter. So that gave you the background and why we are looking at our electives. Let's talk about the process we have used to start thinking about the updates to our electives. So when Vision 2026 came to be two years ago, my team started this work. We actually started by going to all four middle schools and talking with the teachers that work in electives and getting a real understanding of what those courses are and getting their feedback on those courses. And then we started working with our administrative team and we developed that instructional vision that I shared with you. We spent a lot of time talking about what career pathways are and what it looks like at our high school and what we're building and developing with career pathways. Our administrative team spent a long time researching and thinking about what the possibilities could be, but also we went back to our teachers, we gathered input and shared with them what our thinking was. So this is the start. 2024, where you see the red-headed column there, that then will be all the work that happens after that. So I do really want to emphasize, we're really early in this process. We've been working for a while on this, but there's still, there's still a lot to do. So we have some proposed courses that I'm going to speak to you about tonight, but with those proposed courses, there has to be a lot of curriculum development. And so with that, that's standards for those courses, goals, topics that are going to be taught, instructional materials that go with that. We'd need to support the implementation of those courses. We have capital design, you know, capital projects designed for some exploratory labs as well. And then also there's something called the PACE framework. That's part of our work plan this year. That's something for middle school and high school. I'm not going to really spend a lot of time on that, but what you need to know about that tonight is that's where the concept of career awareness and work-based learning is really rooted in, is this PACE framework that comes from the state that we are developing locally here. So what changes are we proposing to electives? So here you can see the course proposals. I did indicate an asterisk if it'd be a new course and a pound sign if it indicates an update to the curriculum. So you can see updates to the curriculum would be the foundations course that we offer, digital literacy, and then also drama, but I'm going to point out the drama course is a part of a series. So it goes drama, speech, performance seminar. So drama in sixth grade, speech in seventh grade, performance seminar in eighth grade. So we've actually indicated those, that's, those teachers have said it's time to come together and look at the curriculum there. With all of the curriculum work, I also want to emphasize there would also be work in building in career awareness opportunities for our students so they can understand what careers sit with these elective courses. Here in seventh grade, we recognize that we need a new option for a year-long course. So that'd be a new year-long course we need to develop. And then quarter courses, again, reiterating this speech, we want to bring those teachers together. And then here you can see a new course, Young Consumerism and Financial Literacy. That makes me think I breezed over something back in sixth grade that I just want to go back to really quickly here. I failed to mention the part that I think is the most, one of the most exciting back in sixth grade, a new course would be Introduction to Culinary Arts and Hospitality. So just wanted to make sure I went back to that. Apologies for skipping over that. Here in eighth grade, you can see just minimal changes. It would really be updates to curriculum, that performance seminar, and then entrepreneurship. In fact, entrepreneurship, we've actually already started that curriculum work. Our teachers this year are piloting the Materials Mix Inc. Mix Inc. is the precursor course to Business Incubator at our, at our high schools. So coming back to the ISB career clusters here, you can see what that change would look like. And so you can see the area of finance and business service would be more developed out with a sequence of courses that would go Introduction to Culinary Arts and Hospitality, Young Consumerism and Financial Literacy, and then the entrepreneur course. So when we talk about this career cluster, what sits in it? You can see it's business and finance, marketing, hospitality and tourism, transportation, distribution and logistics. So with the, these proposed courses, you're going to see what that looks like as students move through our system. So we will have a more established culinary pathway with this proposal. You can see the introduction course in middle school and then you can see the series of courses that follow after that in high school with the Capstone Opportunity. That's, it's at our TCD partners. Here you see a more, a more complete business pathway with the entrepreneurship course that is currently in our middle schools, but there's a stronger connection with them using the Mix Inc. materials that are the Introduction to Business Incubator. And then lastly, you can see the finance pathway where we would have that Financial Literacy course sitting in middle school and then the series of courses that follow then in high school as well. With all of the curriculum work we plan to do at middle school, Portrait of a Graduate has to be at the center of that. We really have to anchor what experiences we're giving to students in furthering developing those Portrait of a Graduate skills. Capital projects. So as a part of the capital projects discussion, there's been discussion of exploratory labs. These would be important to the curriculum that we have laid out in those proposed courses. So the entrepreneurship Mix Inc. curriculum and Introduction to Culinary Arts do require collaboration spaces, presentation areas and material storage. Additionally, Introduction to Culinary Arts would require equipment for cooking and baking. So next steps for this work. Here you can see the list here. This is just isolated really for this school year. We are supporting that pilot of the Mix Inc. materials at all four of our buildings. We've also lined up for, at the October CAC, I would be seeking input from our community members about current middle school students' experiences with electives. What are ways that we can continue to support middle school students through our curriculum development specifically in electives? And ideas from our community about how we can continue to introduce career awareness at the middle school level. So we're looking forward to that in October. We also have it on our list that we still need to finalize what our expansion for Spanish looks like for our students who are engaged in FLEX at the two, at Johnson and Pleasant Hill. I mentioned the PACE framework before. That's really the framework we want to talk about that maps out what career awareness and work-based learning looks like as our students move through six through 12. And then lastly, we have identified working with our special education staff, specifically those that work with our essentials students and the opportunities they have for electives offerings.
All right, Board, any questions?
Could you actually clarify that last point with the, the Essentials elective offerings? Why are those different? What might those look like?
Those, well, our Essentials program first of all is at two buildings, Hubble and Monroe. And the courses that our students in the Essentials program have been involved with for electives opportunities have varied between those two buildings. We see this as an opportunity to add some continuity, but also talk about expansion of those students being in some different courses.
Can I have a follow-up question on that? At Hubble Monroe, that some of the elective classes are integrated with special education students. So will that, like if you're creating different electives for those in the Essentials program, would they still have that opportunity to integrate?
Thank you. Let me clarify. What I mean is more opportunities for integration. Yeah. There's only certain classes that they're a part of right now that, that haven't, that they're integrated in. We want to consider some other courses for that. So thank you for the follow-up.
One of the questions I asked in advance was how student input was going to be incorporated, given that these are classes that we want to pique our students' interest. And I, there's the eighth grade survey that's going to be used. Can you just briefly touch on, you know, what in that career survey that students complete in eighth grade, are they interested in that? Does that align with where these electives are going?
Absolutely. We looked at the feedback that we have gotten from our eighth grade students that have completed that career interest survey over the last two years and we kept bringing that back to our administrative team to say, hey, this is where our students are interested. Should we make these pathways priorities? One that did surface was the business pathway and it was also the arts pathway, which we already know we have a strong set of courses for that. So both of those parts of the career interest inventory were included in our conversations as administrators.
I have a question on the, the career clusters and the two that where we don't have middle school electives?
Yeah.
Is that, before I turned to that page, I thought the culinary class might fit in the agricultural food and, but anyway, is there any concern about the lack of electives related to that and information technology?
Yeah. So this is a really good question. So the agriculture, food and natural resources pathway as a whole has never come out as a high priority item from either our students or conversations with staff. That is more like farming kinds of career area. The other area, IT, that is actually something Mr. Spencer spent time exploring with our middle school team. We felt like there were some challenges there that prevented us from making that a recommended course moving forward.
And then the digital literacy, what, what is that? And does that satisfy information technology at all?
Um, I wouldn't say so. The digital literacy is more, this is a course, there are a couple of our electives courses that weren't an exact match to these pathways. That's more- That's more an extension of the English Language Arts experience where students are fine-tuning literacy skills with digital text.
Yeah. And the reason I'm asking all about that is because, right, this is all towards careers, right? And so like information technology surprises me a little bit because there's a lot of careers, right? A lot of our kids or a lot of college graduates.
Yeah.
And then even on agricultural food, I actually, I don't feel as strongly about that one because of the culinary and hospitality, but a lot of people work in food, whether it's in college or whether that becomes their career. So that's, that's the reason I'm interested. And I haven't really focused on these career clusters from ISBE anyway to know whether, I don't mean to like offend them, but whether that's really important or that should be kind of the guide, the guidepost. So, thank you. Good, John.
I would just point out that the, at the University of Illinois Agricultural, Consumer and Environmental Sciences College there, I think they get more than half of their students out of the Chicago metropolitan area. There's so much going on in food sciences that there may be a space there, maybe the culinary, but it's things beyond that. And some of it can relate to the engineering and other things. I also wanted to ask if there's, is this way too early to think in terms of starting to direct students toward teaching as we're doing in the high schools?
We, we had that, those conversations as part of our administrative team. I think we haven't fleshed out exactly what that concretely looks like, and I think it's a good reminder from you to go back and revisit those conversations and what, what we can do to begin piquing students' interest in a very important career.
I have one more question. Is there any work about the extracurriculars at the middle school level and aligning those with career pathways, so something like information technology? Are there extracurricular clubs that pique that interest when we might not have an elective?
Not that I'm aware of right now, but I think you raise a good point that that could be an alternative way to expose students to that area that could be explored.
For risk of piling on a little, and I know Dave started this, this line of discussion, but in that technology space, just looking at some of the other local districts, their offerings look like have expanded greatly in the technology space at the 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th grade level when it comes to electives. And so, you know, maybe looking at what some of the surrounding districts are doing and why they're doing that might be beneficial as we go through this process.
Hey, Eric, could you repeat it this way? I couldn't hear what you were saying.
Sorry.
Just, just repeat it for me, I guess, or us.
That's fine. So just looking at other districts in the area, they seem to be much more heavily indexed towards that technology area when you look at their middle school electives. And so, you know, maybe understanding what they're offering and why might help inform our process.
Got it. Thank you.
Couple questions, one to follow up on Dave with the career cluster of agriculture, food, and natural resources. Is there something at the high school level that, you know, feeds into that career pathway?
I know from our career pathways website, for every one of the career clusters, we do have matched courses. Off the top of my head, I can't name them all right now, but I do know that.
I, I more ask because I think in the grand scheme of like life, agriculture, food, and natural resources is pretty important, like without food, we would be in trouble.
Yeah, we do have at the high school, if you go back to the culinary page, they, they're, I do believe some of those courses in the high school level may be a match to some of the themes of agriculture. When I, when I think about it, I believe that's some of the information that's on the career pathways website.
Okay, thank you. Then I just wanted to clarify, when you have the drama, speech, performing seminar pathway, do you have, is like, is drama a prerequisite for speech? Like, do you have to have them consecutively, or can you jump into performance seminar as an 8th grader? Does that make sense?
They, all of our students do have, they already participate in drama as a 6th grade student, and then speech, and then they have the choice to take performance seminar.
Okay. Okay, missed, so, because in 8th grade, they could take the language instead of taking the elective, is that why the performance seminar is optional? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, because they could be a band student and a language student.
Okay. And has there ever been consideration for those students? I think there's probably a certain percentage of them who, who want to do band or orchestra and a language, but also really want to have that elective exposure, perhaps doing a zero hour for an elective, or I think many years ago, they used to have a zero hour Spanish. I don't know if they have considered that.
We haven't explored.
Or there's enough interest.
Yeah, we haven't explored that at the middle school. I mean, certainly, I guess, I don't.
It'd probably depend on interest and ability.
Potentially. I mean, I, I wouldn't want off the top of my head to like, like kind of spout. I think there would be some significant considerations you'd have to take in mind in potentially introducing a zero hour middle school. I think there'd be a transportation element at minimum because you would want it to be available to every student if you're offering it, not just those that have the, the capacity. And then I think you've got to kind of look at like totality of the day, and opportunity is good, but we want to keep.
It's a lot.
That day manageable, but, so I, I don't know that it's been, we haven't had significant conversation around it.
Okay. Thank you. And the last question, some of this is dependent on having the, I don't get the terminology right, the exploratory labs? And if that were to not come to fruition, do we have a plan of how we would use space to still accomplish these electives? Or is that a conversation to have in January?
I think that's a conversation we have to have really post-November. So I think, again, we, much of what you have, you have space for currently. The major element, you don't have the, the space currently is the culinary element. So we would definitely have to come back and revisit that if, if we don't have the ability to build those spaces. Doesn't mean you couldn't still build those spaces. I just wouldn't want to commit to you doing that because I think there's some other evaluation you'd have to do at that point on what's priority for resource.
Thank you.
I have one other question relative to, as you've kind of talked with students, how, how many, I mean, what percentage of kids in middle school are really thinking about careers? Now, I'm not, I think it's great, and I think it's great to give them choice to start thinking about it, but I'm just curious, like, you know, I don't know, I don't think my kids in 7th grade had any idea where they were going, so.
Exactly. We've heard that feedback quite a bit through this process and the concept or the concern that if I, if I sign up for a certain set of courses and have a career pathway in mind, am I locked into that? Because I don't really know what I want to do as a 11, 12, or 13-year-old, right? So I think the question is fair. I think the approach we're thinking about more is really capitalizing on the idea that, you know, here in middle school, you have the opportunity to explore different courses, and, and let's make a connection between that, a course you may like, maybe you really enjoy band. What are those career experiences that could go with that course? So it's really about exposure and awareness, and also, we also want students to go into their high school experience, being thoughtful about that four-year plan. Does it mean they have to stick to it the whole time? Absolutely not, but we want students to start to think about what are the electives opportunities and courses that I want to capitalize on while I have that opportunity in high school.
Yeah, and I think that's great perspective, and in terms of concern for kids even in high school, all you got to talk, do is talk to parents of college students and how many of them change their major halfway through. So you're not, you're never locked in.
Exactly. But I do think exposing students to all the different possibilities.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is an obligation we have.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. Thank you.
And I do also like the linkage to Portrait of a Graduate, because even if it's not tied to a career pathway, you know, those core skills, communication, collaboration, problem solving, I think there's those benefits inherently.
Yeah, and I, I do want to highlight, when we talked about both the Mix Ink course and the Introduction to Culinary Arts, we specifically talked about problem solving and communication and collaboration being a strong element to those courses.
Any other questions, Board?
Several questions. So it looks like two electives are being removed altogether, Collaboration and Leadership and Digital Authorship. Is that based on feedback only from teachers? Do we get staff, I'm sorry, student input into that?
Three electives, Collaboration and Leadership, Navigating Informational Sources, and Digital Authorship. That's okay. Yes, so when I started the process of understanding the electives back in 2022, those were the courses that were first mentioned by our staff that they felt like we could revisit and have other options.
Okay. Can you describe what Foundations is?
Yes. I'm going to read the description.
That's, that's fine.
Yes. So it teaches students organization, work habits, and study skills.
So that's 6th grade, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And it looks like, if I do my math correctly, there's three new curriculums and six updated curriculums. Seems like a lot. How many of the new curriculums are we buying? I know Project Lead the Way is something that we would procure through a vendor. Are we buying the, the new ones, or are they kind of in-house developed?
Yeah, so Project Lead the Way, you're, you're correct. We already have the license for that and been using that. Mix Ink is something that we've made an investment in. The other materials, we have, we need to start working with our staff in determining what instructional materials we may need for that. That's something that we need to engage with staff on. Our department chairs and staff at the high school have already been helpful in that, those conversations. So it, it is going to be a lot about working with our staff on furthering developing that curriculum and determining what purchases do need to be made.
And there's one year-long to be determined. The one thing that I looked at that I didn't see, which I know a lot of other middle schools are doing, are more kind of digital communications, video production, graphics design. Is that something that was discussed, chosen not to go in there? Is that, this is something the year-long to be determined might be? That's, that was like the one thing that felt missing to me.
That isn't something that we have landed on right now, but there's certainly opportunities to have conversation.
And then the, my final question is, I love the, I don't remember the name of it, Culinary Arts and Hospitality. It's a two-part question. That 6th grade proposed, it's so closely connected to high school. Is that something that we would consider moving to 8th grade?
I do believe that you, because I said we're early in this process, I do believe as we start engaging and developing curriculum, there could be a possibility that we would make some movement at the grade levels. Again, I'm glad you said that because it, we're still early in this process, but we have strong interest in developing that opportunity for students.
And the other thing kind of related to that, that I'm asking the question only for consideration, is, is if there was a way to connect that to the health, the PE health thing, there's a lot of potential integration of wellness and physical, you know, emotional wellness, physical wellness, healthy eating, that maybe there's a possibility there, they're integrating these curriculums together?
Yeah, that's certainly something to consider as well. I like the way you're thinking. I think too, when we think about that entrepreneurship course that we have right now, it's in 8th grade right now, and we're utilizing the Mix Ink, we're going to get a really good sense because our teachers are utilizing those materials. And after first semester, they would have gone through it. They're going to have a really good sense, should this continue to stay in 8th grade, or is that something that could move? So.
So, I mean, overall, it's super exciting. You know, my kids went through, all of our kids went through this. I'm sure all the ambassadors back here can talk about their electives. Love it eventually, as we get deeper into this conversation, hear from our high school ambassadors on this, but I love the process. I know it's going to be a long runway to the, to the point where it can actually implement it from all the work that has to get done and, and having the correct space to do it, but it's a, it's a great first step, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
I shouldn't say first step because I know there's been many steps, but in terms of coming to the Board, it feels like the first step.
Yeah.
I just have a little different perspective that we've heard. My perspective is capacity, right? And as we broaden the portfolio of choices, that's, that's a lot of work, as Brad said, right? So I think about what are we trying to accomplish with this, right? It's, it's giving the kids choice, it's exposing them to experiences, right? And letting them learn other skills that, you know, develop others, collaboration, you know, speech production. And so to me, that's the most important part versus expanding a portfolio. And so I, just from a capacity perspective, that's my more pragmatic thought about it. And I don't want to limit choice, but we can do everything as well. So I understand that trade-off, and I appreciate the initial presentation and look forward to the next.
That's a good point, because one thing I just thought about is really, the, the art of all this work that I believe that the administration has to do is how do we connect these electives to their other core classes? You know, how does math and science connect to other things? I mean, you know, science and culinary arts, it seems like there's a pretty logical connection. There are so many opportunities, which is another, another layer of complexity to kind of round out the whole experience of students.
Thanks, Brad. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our second overall report is on the Division 2026 Human Resources Department update. Dr. Schuler.
Yep, Mr. Biskin is making his way up to the podium. He's going to give you what is an annual update after we've just completed hiring season and the start of the year on some of your key HR metrics and feedbacks. So, Mr. Biskin?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. I'm proud to provide you with your 2324 Human Resources Department summary. We do a lot of work every single year to make sure that we put the best people in front of our students. I just want to start with our, with our first slide. Your Human Resources Department serves a number of, of needs, but I want to focus on those top three first. We try to acquire talent, we retain talent, and we try our best to develop that, that talent. We also serve as the initial contact point for people seeking jobs in our district, and we're the entry point for all new employees. The reason I want to focus on that is because it is vitally important that the people that we have on our Human Resources team do a great job of making those new staff members feel like they're part of our district. Kristi Kuntz, your Director of HR, does a wonderful job of doing that and leading that, that team, which is comprised of Janelle, Jenny, Sarah, Eileen, Bethany, and Gina. They do an outstanding job of welcoming new staff to our district. I think it plays a big part in how people feel about entering and staying, so they, they work extremely hard. We also coordinate and administer leave of absences, work calendars, graduate coursework. We verify the licensure, state reporting, evals, and all staffing. All of this centers around people. That's what it is. So again, the team that you have working for our district does a wonderful job of making sure that our, our new staff feel like they're part of our district. Want to go to the next slide that focuses on some data points. These are data points that are shared each year, but I want to give some context to some of them. I'm going to go from left to right, starting at the top. We had 448 total new hires, and that includes all certified and non-certified, all support staff, any ancillary staff such as crossing guards, before and after-school program staff. So this includes everyone. In addition to that, we hired 117 guest teachers, which is outstanding. In addition to that, we hired 117 guest teachers, which is outstanding. They do a wonderful job of providing consistency within the buildings when we have staff out. We processed 236 leaves. We also processed 364 resignations. Just to put that number in context, that may seem like a lot, but when you look at the retention rate of our district, we have a non-certified retention rate last year of 84%. We had a certified retention rate of 95% and an admin retention rate of 90%. So we're, we're doing a great job of not only hiring people, but keeping them here. We processed 188 lane changes, 945 assignment changes. We processed 954 micros, which is outstanding. I think it speaks to our staff that they continue to model learning. They apply that knowledge into the classroom and to their practice. I think it's a great example for their colleagues. It's also a great example for our, for our students. On the bottom left, 107 service awards given out. Once again, I think this speaks to the longevity of many of our, of our staff. People stay here, and that's an important part of having a great district. We had 151 student teachers and students who observe classes. That's an important piece because we obviously want to get students that are seeking to work in this field. We want to get them into our buildings, and we want them to get integrated into our culture. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. We also processed 208 permissive transfers and then 88 FOIA requests. The next slide, we're going to talk a little bit about recruitment and selection. So this past summer, or really starting late last school year and into this summer, we really utilized social media from a larger scale. We used X, once Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. And we really focused on highlighting the vacancies, not only in the non-certified areas, but the certified areas. We also post on IASA and IASBO if we're looking for jobs to fill in the finance area. LinkedIn and Indeed are also utilized. And then we have Interview Stream, which is a component of the job application process for all, all job applicants. That is an in-house screener. So all certified and admin go through that. It's a three-question video where they are recorded and they answer three questions. How did you choose your field of study? The second question is describe the type of teacher or professor that has created the most beneficial learning experience for you. And then what is your ultimate educational goal? And this really serves the purpose for our building leaders to be able to screen candidates and see who they want to bring in to actually talk with. Up at the top right, Student-Teacher Partnerships. This, to me, is one of the ways I believe we can make real progress in recruiting high-quality, diverse candidates. If we can get student teachers placed in our schools, once again, they're in our culture, they're going to form connections with the staff, and they're more likely to want to stay. And on the flip side of that, it gives building leaders the chance to see if this person who's just starting out is coachable, they're willing to learn, and they can get better. So we, we really think we can make gains there. We just signed an agreement to start this school year with Northeastern Illinois. They have a very diverse student body, and it's one that is similar to the cross-section of the student body that we have in our school district. So we want to try to attract as many high-quality candidates as possible, and we think this is a great way we can, we can do that. On the bottom right, Virtual Job Fair. This is a event that Kristi Koontz and I participated in last spring. I'll be honest, I was skeptical going into it because of the virtual nature of it, but I am a big fan now. We got access to over 70 people that we were able to talk with, that we were able to see. And while we may not, I think we hired four people out of that, out of that group, but we also formed partnerships with people that perhaps were certified in areas that we weren't looking for this year, but maybe next, next year. So Kristi and I had FaceTime with a lot of different people. Our goal this year is to be part of two of those, and we will continue to work through that. On the bottom, Introduction to Teaching Course. This is our position of strength. And while we may not see the fruits of the efforts next year or even the year after, in future years, our goal is to see that. These are students that are part of our culture. They understand what our district is about. They know what we value. They provide different views that we hope are then nurtured when they leave and then perhaps come, come back. And I think what we've gotten really good at this past year, we've been very intentional about finding students that we believe, through what they've shown us, that they'd be great in this, even if they haven't thought about it, and really talking to them about, I think you should take this course. So I think we've gotten better in that, in that realm. The other point is this, and I, I think it, it speaks to everything that we try to do. If we can continue to focus on culture, we can continue to focus on building strong connections with students. And we try to make that, which we do, we try to make that for every single student. We're trying every day to make schools that work for every student. If we can provide that, we have a much better chance of students having a good experience and then saying, I think I want to give back. So the more we can focus on that, the better chance we have of getting, getting those students to come back and impact future students. Next slide, on the retention of staff. So we have worked over the past few years, WWEA, with a competitive contract. We continue to work with the CEA. Their pay has bumped up a little, but we continue to work with them. Our new teacher mentor program, last year was the first year that, that we had that, and the feedback we received from our new staff was positive. The idea that they have someone that they can go to, that they can ask questions to without any judgment at all, and for that person to be able to talk with them about different topics based on the time of the school year has really improved the experience for our, for our new, new staff. That third one, focus on culture, I've talked about that. That has to be number one. And our building leaders do an outstanding job of creating a positive culture within their buildings. The morale survey data, the stay interview data, and the five essentials data, which is a little different because students and parents can be part of that. We take that data, we analyze that data, not just from a district standpoint, but from a building standpoint. And our building leaders make sure that they ID what it affirms that they're doing well. But they, it also provides an opportunity for us to make sure that we're focusing on areas that we have to get better at. And that may look different at different schools, but that data is, is used. That helps improve staff voice. They feel more part of the process. That's important in retaining staff. I'm also proud to say that last year, we had monthly guest teacher orientations every single month, which means we were hiring guest teachers, which is, which is great. The orientation was done in years prior. Then COVID came. We all know that story. Now, now it's back. So we're able to provide a successful launching point for our guest teachers to have a great start. And then, as we do every year, we welcome nearly 120 certified staff through our new teacher induction, which is an outstanding event for them to get to understand the, sort of the broader culture of our district, what we value, what, what we stand for. We had, we had over 120, or nearly 120. This year, we added a couple different items to this. The first one, we had a current staff member and then a current student speak to our, to our new, new staff and share the experiences of being in the district from, from their points of view. It was outstanding. The second thing we did, everyone in that room and in the profession can always go back to someone, at least one person when they were a student that impacted them, to perhaps make the decision to be an educator. So what we did, we had cards for all of our new, new staff, and we gave them time to write a note to that person. They then sealed it, they addressed it, and we were able to send it out to those people. I guarantee you that was probably one of the best things that, that they had, they had done. If they hadn't done it in the past already, they had an opportunity to do it now. It was a really cool moment for all of them. So want to focus on some progress in some focus areas at the start of this school year. For the first time in many years, we were fully staffed for social workers, psychs, and special ed teachers. That is a victory. It's not an easy task. Our building leaders, as well as the HR department, did an outstanding job of making sure that those jobs were filled with high-quality people. Overall, we have more TAs hired. We started the summer with nearly 100 openings. We then got down to about 50, which, you know, again, we made a lot of progress in that area. High-need TA jobs are still going to be a challenge, and we will continue to work through, through that. Contracted TAs, we started last year with 42. This year, we started with 25. Made progress in that. And then on the bottom, nearly 32, 32% increase in bilingual Spanish-certified staff over the past two years. We continue to make that a focal point in the ML area, and Dr. Pueyo is very happy with that. Next slide just focuses on some staffing totals. We go back to 2022 and then up to 2025. On the top row, you can see in the certified column, we went from in '24, 1148, to now 1164. The reason for that is we, we had to make sure that we hired special ed and ML teachers to support the students who needed that. So that's, that's where that, that jump is. On the bottom, on the admin side, just to give a little context, 2022, we had 56. We then went to 58. That was a Bauer Assistant Principal that was added. And then we had a middle school director that was added. And then from '23 to '24, we went from 58 to 59, and that was a special ed administrator that was added too. Retirements on the bottom, from last school year, certified, we had 17, non-certified, we had 23, and then administration, we had three. I would imagine we could anticipate in, in the certified area, a large group of retirees in two more years. So we're planning for, for that. Any questions? All of this, all of this work we do is to support the mission and the vision of the district. People are the center of every one of those goals, and the HR team focuses on that, as well as your building leaders.
Any questions, Board?
Great, thank you. Just two questions. Could you repeat the retention numbers you mentioned earlier?
Sure. Let me grab that. So the retention numbers from last year, non-certified was 84%, certified was 95%, and administrators were 90%.
Thank you. And then as, you know, board member, something I hear frequently as a parent, something I've experienced, is it feels like we are perhaps unique in how many of our teachers have historical ties to the community. They grew up here, they went to school here, and now they teach here. Do we have any numbers to indicate if that's more than a feeling and if that trend is shifting at all over time?
I think that's a great question, and I think that's probably worthy of us looking into also. But I, I don't have that, that data, but that, that's something I think we could find.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board?
I really appreciate the focus on the student-teacher partnerships. And you mentioned that we signed an affiliation agreement for, for one new school. Can you just give me a sense of how many schools or how many colleges we have student-teacher partnerships with?
So we probably are between 20 and 25, but there are some that we get a lot more student teachers from than, than the others. But I think if we continue to reach out and, you know, build trust, build partnership with other schools, that perhaps we can, we can get, get more.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Two, actually, two questions. Really, the, the first one is something maybe, I don't think we can really answer to it, but it'd be interesting to know, data points on this, the snapshots, 2324. I'd be interested in knowing what percentage of our staff are taking micro credentials? Not, not just we've had 954 micro credentials, but what, what percentage of our staff are doing that? Taking advantage of that opportunity? And then kind of related to that is the data around the offers that we make that are not accepted? And, and why we aren't able to, if we, if we make an offer to a staff member, they don't, they don't accept it? Learning from the why might be an informative kind of point to that. So that's the, the first point, maybe future, future analysis. The, the second one was really, I guess, driven out of a conversation I had today with another school district, how I look at this retention of staff, and I think focus on culture, morale survey data, stay interviews, five essentials data, that's all a collection of information that we could use to, use as a kind of a marketing tool to talk about what it's like to work in our district, what, what's, what's our feedback from students, our parents? Why do people stay here? You know, what's the morale and the culture of the district? I would think if we could capture and kind of aggregate that, it might be a useful tool to help in the recruitment process. So just some kind of points of insight that may or, may or may not be useful.
No, I, I like that idea. I, I think the more we can share about perhaps what makes us different, we'll also attract more and more people.
I guess kind of related to my, my comment is if we could use, it kind of goes back to the middle school electives. If we could engage our staff, engage our, our students to, you know, create a market, a marketing video that we could use to promote the opportunities, what it's like to work in District 200. That's what these candidates are looking for. You know, they're going to look at something like that on social media. They're not necessarily going to go, you know, go through the Facebook or the, the website of our district. So kind of modern tools to enhance recruitment and, and kind of advertising could be, could be useful. I'm sure we're maybe already doing some of that, but just a thought.
Doing some, but I, I think there's, there's always room for growth.
There could be an elective marketing class that could create that video? I, just two quick questions. Matt, thank you so much. I, one day, one comment. I appreciate that, and I've seen directly where we've taken staff feedback and, and made changes, so I appreciate that. I just want to clarify with the retention rate. So if it's 95% of certified staff retain, is that 5% people who chose to leave, not those that we didn't rehire?
It is, it is both, yeah.
It's just anybody not returning. So it also includes retirements, like natural pieces that aren't necessarily just because somebody was dissatisfied and, and left. So it's just anybody who's.
That's helpful because I feel that is even a higher retention rate. So that's nice. That's awesome. And then final question, this may not be the right time or place, but when do we start the negotiation for the classified staff contract that is going to be?
We have an initial meeting coming up in, in a couple weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
One quick aside just related to this, just, I thought it was an interesting note. I, Matt and Kristi, and I saw it earlier. So we, we actually had a doctoral student who was doing research on what causes teachers to stay inside of their organization. And I just share this as a celebration. She specifically reached out to districts that had higher retention rates per school report cards than others. And so she did send that, that survey, just noticed that District 200, you know, well, certainly, you can always get better. We certainly, relative to our counterparts, do have a really high retention rate, which I think is a positive sign, certainly for culture. Hopefully, we can learn something from the study too.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We have two discussion items tonight. Oh, sorry, John.
I was just going to ask if you see additional opportunities to bring student teachers here after they grow up. after they graduate and to attract our high school students that are expressing an interest in teaching. Is there more we can do to get them back here?
You know, I think we have partnerships with many of the universities that they select, and if they choose that field to study, many of them do put down our district to come back. There are also some universities that, within their programs, they encourage their student-teachers to student- teach outside of the district in which they went as a student, which I do see the value in that, too. You want different experiences, four-year student-teachers, and so something different than what they were in terms of when they were a student probably brings a lot of value to them. All right, thank you. We have two discussion items tonight. The first is the development of the 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school calendars. Dr. Schuler.
Yep, so Mr. Bisken's still at the podium, so I think just two things we wanted to accomplish under this discussion item tonight. One is to just recap for the board the process of calendar development. Matt, are you going to go there, or are you going to go to the podium? Are you going to stay here? Okay, yeah. Right behind you. Thank you. Just to recap that process of calendar development, sorry about that. And then, two, hear feedback from the board. And just quick bit of context, why we're having this conversation now. When we approved the calendar last year, I know we got some feedback from the board at approval time that perhaps you felt like you missed an input opportunity that could have come from just either not understanding the process fully from experience or a missed opportunity, and so we wanted to make sure on the front end, before Matt launches into his work with the committee that will bring a recommended calendar to the board, that we have an opportunity to both recap the process and make sure any considerations you think should be a part of the process are brought out into the discussion, so.
So the process itself starts with the committee itself, which is made up of myself and Bryce Can, and then we have other staff and admin from the district that make up of the committee. We had our first meeting last week. We just talked about the timeline. We would like to, number one, have a multi-year calendar put in front of you, and then we would like to have that posted in November and then approved in December. This helps the community with planning, obviously, it helps us with planning. So there are different considerations that we take into account. While there's not a lot of room to move within the calendar, there are always different challenges based on the year, like this current year, we have the election. That is a day off. That's a day that we'll gain next year. So I know last year, when you approved this year's calendar, you did have some feedback as to perhaps what we could survey students, staff, the community on. So what I'd like for you to do now is just share any of that, that you would like us to focus on and perhaps create questions based on that feedback.
I know I was one of those people with questions this last time around, so I'll happily lead off. I think the first thing is just making sure to understand from a timeline perspective, when we survey students, when we survey the community, assuming that there is an unambiguous point of feedback, and frankly, last year there wasn't, there was a lot of ambiguity. But if there was something clear, do we actually have time in the process to incorporate that feedback? It didn't feel last year like there was that time, so that'd be the first thing. The second is, I know there was some discussion around Indigenous Peoples/Columbus Day, and I'd like to understand two things. One, points of views and pros and cons to using it as an educational day in terms of actually speaking to the topic for which we honor the day, you know, a little bit of the history and the impact. Secondly, simply adding it back as an instructional day to get an extra day into the year, understanding that would have presumably contractual and financial ramifications, but, you know, is there that opportunity, should the board want to pursue that, to add an additional instructional day? I think those were my main topics.
And to follow up on, thank you, Julie, for letting me use your microphone. To follow up on Columbus Indigenous Persons' Day, I don't know that it would add an extra day. I think, wouldn't it just take a day off the end of the year and then balance out the semesters a little bit more if we were to have an in-school day on Columbus Indigenous Persons' Day? That was my thought, although I'd be happy to entertain the thought of having an extra day in the calendar, but I think that would require us to go back to collective bargaining. So I think there's value in having students in class on that day, maybe to learn a little bit of the history, but also to be in class. Yeah, that's all about that.
Couple considerations. First off, I mean, let's face it, the controversy that we hear as a board is, what's the first day of school? That's the bottom line. That's the only issue that parents are concerned about, and having kind of experienced this for quite a while, it's like, my perception is, when you have young kids, you want to start later, but when your kids get to high school, you really appreciate the early start, especially around the holidays. So it's just the cycle of having your kids go through the 12 years or 13 years of education. I don't know how to solve that. We're going to battle that every year regardless. So as a board, you know, and I'm assuming the committee looks at that balance of number of days, you know, first semester, second semester, especially at high school. I'm curious as to the actual imbalance, because we lose testing days in the second semester. We lose days for instruction because of testing. Just curious, like, how many actually days are we losing? And then, Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, I agree with Eric, I think we all talked about that last year, it's an opportunity, maybe, for our students. And then, one of the things that I always struggle with is lost days for parent-teacher conferences. I know we have, kind of this year, if I recall, we kind of tied it up with Veterans' Day or another wraparound time with, probably Veterans' Day in November? I don't remember what the day was, something in November. I don't know if there's a different solution to enable parent-teacher conferences that doesn't take away from days in class in that first semester. That'd be something I'd be interested in having the committee explore, but this is a no-win situation. Now, I appreciate how complicated it is and try to balance it out and address as much as you can, it's just, there's just more days in the second half of the year, unless we started two weeks earlier.
Can I add to that, Brad? So I agree with the parent-teacher conference day. I think not only does it take away, we count it as an in-person school day, even though the children, students are not in class. A little problem with that, but I understand that the state allows us to do that. But also, I think it's difficult for families with younger children to have that day off and to yet attend a teacher conference. Like, I just think the dynamic, it is probably more difficult, so I'm curious how families are feeling about that, if it's helpful or not. Thank you.
To me, it's all about process, and if you've got input from the teachers, you've got input from the administration, you've got input from the parents by way of a survey, to me, that answers the question. The one thing I would be cautious about is a multi-year calendar. If you're looking out for the second year, I don't know how firm you would want to have that, because we may learn some things in the first year that ought to be applied to the second year.
Just one other point of consideration, as one of those parents of the younger children, getting feedback from the Park District on what days they're doing camps. I know for some of our days off, they do offer camps, which have been exceptional, extremely helpful, but not for all days. So as you go through that calendar process, that might be a good point of reference and information.
Yes. Thank you.
And to follow up what John said, scheduling too far out, I wonder if IHSA's calendar changes? Does it fluctuate? I know with the very early start date this year, there were some issues with trying to figure out athletics and band with school already starting.
And even if, points made, that second year couldn't be firmed, I still think getting a plan out there, even if we have to provide some disclaimers on it, is beneficial to a lot of parents and teachers for planning.
Very good point, yeah, having it. So it's, we can approve it with the caveat that it could change. Hopefully not, but it could change. And, yeah, I don't know how to fix the issue of the IHSA calendar somewhat conflicting.
That one's generally pretty set, I mean, far enough out that we're talking here. One other thought in terms of always looking an additional year out, and there may be some value in getting into that as well, is that there is a practical reality that if we are having a conversation in November about the following year's calendar, we naturally put ourselves under a pretty tight timeline. Like, you just, if something came up around which you needed to take a little more time, survey a group within the community, you don't necessarily have that time if you're talking November for the next year, but if you're talking in November about the following year, meaning you always have a year set, and then you get into a calendar review where you're then going one further year out, you know, not that I'm asking or suggesting that the board spend too much time on the calendar every year, but it is, it just gives you that flexibility without kind of that piece. The one other thing I did ask coming into tonight, and I do want to just give them a chance if they have some immediate feedback, really, the compelling board interest that drove the calendar the last couple of years was the issue of semester complete before winter break, and that was really done with student wellness kind of thought in mind. So I did ask our ambassadors if they had some feedback they wanted to bring tonight about the value of that really as a compelling calendar piece, because that does end up being a really significant driver to options within the calendar, if we obviously still want to continue to meet that, so. So Board ambassadors, I just asked if you have any thoughts on that, just the first semester finishing before winter break as opposed to semester coming back after winter break and then wrapping up at some point with finals afterwards?
Can you hear me? So I think, I had the opportunity to, I know we were, I mentioned a little bit earlier that we were kind of making a survey to get a wider range of the student population and their opinion on this issue, but I had the opportunity, I personally talked to 50 students at Wheatonville South, and they were all majority, heavy majority, in favor of having the final exams before winter break, because they felt that gives them ample time to study, and then that extra two weeks or one week or whatever it may be after winter break just added unnecessary stress during the actual break to study. So students prefer, generally, that break to relax and not have to worry about school.
I would agree. I think that, I mean, I don't want to say it has to, but I feel like it makes it a lot easier for students, and probably for teachers, too, to have it before winter break. We had, in our meeting at Wheaton North, we talked about this, and we said that the break, it feels almost like a summer break where, like, school is kind of done. All your grades are finalized and you're waiting for the next year, next semester, and then it's a fresh start when you return to school after that break. And we, I'm assuming it's the same at South, but our freshman year, we had finals after winter break, and then sophomore, junior, and then this year it'll be before winter break. And the scores, it's easier to study before winter break because it's fresh in your mind and everything. The scores were better, and then everything, it's more like you have that week to build up to review instead of having to go home, go on vacation for two weeks, and come back and take your finals.
So I went to the Wheaton North ambassadors meeting this morning, and 100% of our students said they liked the tests before the winter break. A lot of people said that the pacing of the course really matters, especially for the one semester courses, like AP Gov, for example, that's only one semester, and people really liked that it was, like, you got a break and just like, like you said, like, you're completely free from school for those few weeks. And like I said, it does compress the AP courses.
For sure, I would agree with what everybody said. It's definitely better to have the finals before break, kind of building off of what Luke said. Those two weeks that we would have off freshman year, I feel like instead of that helping us, it kind of like delayed us, because you would forget a lot of material, and then you wouldn't have instruction with your teacher, and then you would kind of come back, have two weeks of school, and then just go straight into finals. So I think that was more stressful rather than helpful. And then, for kind of like the disbalance between first semester and second semester, I personally think it's a good thing that we have more days second semester, especially when it comes to AP testing and stuff like that, because, well, yes, like, the first semester courses, like AP Gov or microeconomics and stuff, or compressed into first semester, you have more time then to review that material in second semester, and then, like, actual AP testing days aren't going to affect into class instruction, because when it comes to AP classes, which I feel like that's what it impacts the most, you're going to have to cram anyways to get everything in before the test day. So the fact that we have extra days second semester, I think that makes it better and actually helps us.
Thank you. So I think, I hope that that's helpful for the board to just hear. I mean, it's obviously for me to understand that remains a pretty compelling interest from the student's side. We kind of always say with the schedule, a little mantra, right? You can do anything with a calendar, we just can't do everything with a calendar. So some of these pieces will have to bounce, but anything else from the board before we move on?
Yeah, so, you know, first, I agree with John about the process, and I also think I don't get as deep or committed as everybody else. I know that no matter what we decide is wrong. The start date is wrong, the end date is wrong, so it doesn't matter. This perspective was really good, and the comment Carla made about the extra days in the second semester, something I didn't consider in the past. But, you know, a couple things I just wanted to mention. I think, you know, kind of, that I would hope the committee would consider, and is the start date. I know there's a lot of interest around Columbus Day. I think finals, we can check off the list, but that has a big impact on the balance. The Thanksgiving break, I know that we've, I think it's a great thing, and I don't know when that's been surveyed last, but I think that's something just to at least consider if there is consideration on the imbalance between first and second semester. And then, because there was so much interest, especially when we went to approve the calendar, I don't know how long this process is going to go on with the committee, but should we have a short update, kind of a progress report between now and when we vote on it, just as a thought?
You don't have a lot, so our goal is to bring that to you in November, so that would only leave October potentially, and I don't know where we'll be on that, but I hear the interest, understand.
And I'm good with that.
And just last little reminder is, even from the board's side, you're voting in November to post the calendar, that does not mean you cannot make a tweak even once you've posted it, based on whatever feedback comes in.
Yeah, so we'll post in November and approve in December.
That would be the idea.
Thanks.
The only other data point I'll add is if we're considering adding content, meaning an extra day of some of a topic, I'd like to know how much work that entails from a curriculum perspective, you know, whether it's creating content, rolling out content, training, because there's a lot of work that goes into that. So I'd like to know what that means if we're going to consider that idea at the time, whenever we roll it out.
Our goal is to survey. I mean, I think we are at a point where perhaps we haven't done that in quite some time. We had a break with COVID where we didn't really need to do it, but we certainly want to do that, and I think your feedback is essential for us to move forward with it. We're excited for the opportunity. Thank you. Our last discussion item tonight is the Citizens Advisory Committee Agenda Topics.
Yep, so I think I framed this last time, just want to hear from the board if there are particular topics you'd like for us to consider with CAC. Again, same thing, I don't know that we can do all of them, but certainly want to hear your thoughts or ideas, and I'll capture them.
So Board, go ahead.
All right. The two topics that came to mind is, last year I suggested finance, and it just happened that that was a CAC meeting that... finance, and it just happened that that was a CAC meeting that I was able to attend as a board member. And I thought it was a really useful and helpful discussion, because so much of the discussion is around priorities and financing. And so having community member input on that was, was helpful. And then we've also, you know, briefly discussed, we've had the, the good problem the past few years of more applicants than there are positions on CAC. And so having the CAC weigh in on, you know, what do we do in that situation? Do we, you know, is, is that, you know, are we okay excluding people that have interests? Do we, you know, want to shorten terms? And, and just, I think it's important for those on the committee to provide some feedback on that.
Anyone else?
Yes. So three other possible topics. Community perspectives on student mobile device policy at various grade levels would be one. Community perspective on technology strategy. I know we've talked about the devices coming up for renewal, and do we maintain one-to-one? Do we do so at all grade levels? And, you know, kind of what's the intent of whatever strategy we land upon relative to educational outcomes? And then third, potentially asking the CAC if there are recommendations they have for how we educate the school community and the broader community on how to interpret school report cards, five essentials, and other key metrics.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll add one more. We, we, we've heard recently a lot about safety features and security. And so it might be good to get some feedback from the CAC on where their thoughts are, what, what they think about different things out there, or just.
Okay. Safety. Brad?
Well, looking at this list, a lot of these things are connected together. So it's really, you could simply make it a shorter list by combining some of these topics and some of the, some of the issues that I was going to flag are, have been talked about. The one thing that I think we're really going to use the CAC for advisory board, the issue that we talked a little bit about, I think in the spring, maybe it was last fall, but Foley kindergarten, you know, we kind of had a really deep dive on costs and timing and solutions for that. But we're going to have to come back to that. So that might be a good topic to bring back to the CAC. Yeah, cell phone policy, you know, that's something we've talked about the last time. It's come up recently. I tell you, I read an article every day about some schools somewhere in the country diving into that issue. So, you know, it's, it's ahead of us. So we're going to have to tackle it.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you. You have what you need? Perfect. Good. All right. Board Committee Reports. The Board Facilities Committee met on August 30th. Meeting notes were attached. Mr. Paulson, any additional comments?
Really talked about three issues. Dr. Schuler mentioned the potential intergovernmental agreement with Curl Stream Park District with playground work at, at Longfellow. We discussed that, pros and cons, costs. One of the benefits we had with, with our middle school projects is that the city of Wheaton conducted some traffic analysis around those sites, you know, before school, after school, buses, vehicles, pedestrians. So we got some good information that would help inform as we get deeper into the design process, should we get deeper into the design process. And then secondly, or third, a discussion on the potential rough running project schedule and the opportunities and the conversations the administrations had with the design and construction team of possibly compressing the schedule and trying to do more work over the summer to try to get done quicker, as opposed to kind of save that last year and pull it forward. So not really any kind of decisions we had to make as a facility committee. It was more just a conversation that Dr. Schuler, Brian O'Keefe, sorry, Dr. O'Keefe, want to bring back to the design and construction team. So more to, more on that. Of course, all contingent upon the decision on the community.
Hey, Red, did you guys have any conversation around the trend of the increased projects in the overall market? Is there a change in that, or is that pretty much still on track to be higher than normal?
We, we didn't discuss that. I would imagine pretty soon, I'm kind of beginning to collect some research about what's going to be on the ballot.
Okay, just curious.
You can't really, you can't really aggregate that data until either IESB or the individual counties, you know, kind of post what the questions are.
I think there, there is a point of connection, though, Rob, to one. There have been a few projects that Nicholas has bid recently where they've gotten really good results. Some of it depends on how you package the work. So part of this discussion around project sequencing was about, obviously, trying to compress and get the end done perhaps a year earlier than we projected. But two, about making sure that we package the work in a way that would also be desirable to those that want to bid, because our work is potentially, when it gets out on the market, if packaged the right way, an opportunity for a couple of folks that could bid on work that would carry them for a couple of years, right? Even in multiple bid packages. So I think there's some strategy around that that may help us potentially achieve, you know, best results when we go out the bid as well.
Yeah, thank you. Great topic. Great point. All right. Oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
I'd like to supplement a little bit about Brad's report. I thought the traffic studies were excellent, they're done by the police department, and they, I think, showed that we're in, for the most part, pretty good shape. And it's a good document to have in our files.
Well, I've skipped you twice tonight, so I hope you don't hold that against me. I've skipped you twice tonight. I hope you don't hold that against me. Sorry. All right. The Board Finance Committee met on September 5th. Meeting notes were attached. Mr. Long, any additional comments?
No, I mean, it was, the meeting was entirely focused on the budget, which we heard from Dr. O'Keefe. So there's really nothing additional to report.
All right. Thank you. The Human Resource HR Policy Committee met on September 9th. The meeting notes were attached. Ms. Kulevitz, any additional comments?
We reviewed, just to summarize the highlights, the recent issue of press, there's going to be one policy that we're going to revisit in a few months, and then the remaining policies will be in front of us for the next meeting for posting.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports from board members?
Yes. Just a reminder, the IASB Resolutions Committee met last month, and so we will be getting a resolution committee report at some point this month. And we'll have to slot into the upcoming agenda's opportunity to review that as a group and determine how we want to weigh in on those resolutions.
Yeah. So just for the board, I did ask Eric if he would volunteer, and he signed up for that duty again. So we appreciate that, Eric, very much. Thank you, Eric. Very much. Okay, we have five written reports provided to the board. We have the monthly financial reports, the Freedom of Information Act report, the Board Communication Log, the Citizen Advisory Committee Report, and the Teacher Administrator and IMRF Compensation Reports. Those are all on the, attached to the agenda. We have two topics for future discussions identified, the State, the State of Schools Overview, as well as the Illinois State Report Cards. Are there any other additional topics board members want considered for future discussion?
So one of the topics that Julie had mentioned for CAC input, the discussion of how to handle membership in the CAC, given the, the high level of interest we've had, I think asking the CAC for their input is good. I also think we may want to have a discussion as a board around that, since the CAC is a committee to the board.
Thank you. Any other topics? All right. Our next regular meeting will be on October 9th at 7:00 at Johnson Elementary School. A couple of announcements. The board's next coffee with, with the board is this Saturday, September 14th at 9:00 AM at the School Service Center. And our next committee of the whole meeting will be on September 25th at 7:00 PM at the School Service Center. There be no further action to come before the board. I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Moved by Mr. Long?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.